It feels brighter in here.
Tell me when you're settled and I'll start.
I'm good.
The lights look brighter.
They do. They changed the light.
Changed the light, yeah.
Hey, it's 5:30. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Hopkinton Select Board. In attendance at the moment is Jeff, Thomas, myself, Kenneth, and maybe we'll start with points of pride.
Sure. To add special thing, all the staff that's involved in prepping for the fair and staffing on the fair from the public safety standpoint, especially. It went very well. I believe Saturday there are 27,000 people there. So it does certainly swells the population that's in town on that day. It was a hot day. There were a lot of calls, a lot of rescue type things, but nothing major, I don't believe. And also thank you to Carol and Christine and all the people involved in the elections. The highway crew came over this afternoon and said, everything is ready to go tomorrow at 7:00 AM.
A few things, but first just like ask for a moment of silence and remembrance of 9/11. Thank you. Following up on the towny night, I believe they were roughly a quarter of the residents of town attended, which was great. And I'd like to thank Norm since he's here for himself. Well, Steph Norris, Neil, Sabrina and I welcoming our residents. And also, I was participating in the peddling for patients Saturday, and I received a lot of comments about the Thursday night concerts, very, very favorable comments. So I would just like to officially, you know, thank the Chamber of Commerce and everybody else who's involved in that. I guess they get very good crowds.
I've heard a lot of positive comments as well.
Okay, with that, we'll turn to administrative. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Second. More in favor?
I have.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the
Not point of order, Ken. Since Sabrina's not here, I have to abstain because I wasn't at the meetings. We want to postpone this agenda item until Sabrina arrives. I don't know if it matters or not.
I was gonna say, we have a quorum, so if you abstain, I think it's fine.
I just want to make sure before we go through it.
Good point. Okay, so with that, I guess, Thomas, do you want to make a motion to approve the public meeting minutes of August 29?
Some of.
Okay, and I'll second all those in favor.
I abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, Carrie's. Thomas, do you want to make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of August 29, session one?
Some of.
I'll second out there sealed. All those in favor?
I abstain.
Similarly, for session two of August 29, which I note were not sealed.
Some of.
And I'll second. All those in favor?
I abstain.
Session three of August 29, the non-public meeting minutes, again, not sealed.
Some of.
I'll second. All those in favor?
I abstain.
Okay, and finally, approval of the non-public meeting minutes, August 29, session four, which is also sealed.
Some of.
Second.
I abstain.
Okay. Okay, our first public appointment is with Kelly, our finance director, to talk about year-to-date financials.
Well, I think Neil will send you guys the expenditure reports. I'm still working towards the revenues.
I was gonna ask you about that.
Ken's always focused on the road.
Well, on both.
With the revenues, I have mostly January through June completed, but I'm still working on some reconciliations with the banks. There's like 27 bank accounts and I'm 22 accounts in reconciling for the first part.
Where there is a budget committee meeting Wednesday evening, I'd ask you tomorrow to send out to the budget committee the most recent that you have, you know, whether it's June or whatever it is, so that they have something to look at. And just the summary page for revenues. And then on expenses, also the summary page, but the most current. I kind of have to explain why it's different dates.
Whether that
Thank you.
And as far as the expenditure, it's like we're just under 58% expense of the year, so. Questions?
Does anybody else have any? Okay. Under count 4155 Personnel Administration. I'm curious about the FICR and the Medicare. I don't know, Neil, if you could put that up?
Yeah. Can we?
I will get that.
Yeah.
Okay. Under count 4195 Cemetery Professional Services. Am I correct in assuming we'll be getting a reimbursement from the cemetery reserves?
Yes.
Under 4196 Insurance, is there going to be, under the revenues, a $10,000 check showing up? We're about $10,000 over budget in there.
For the insurance?
Yeah. Is that for a deductible or?
It's like $5,000 over. I'll look into that one also.
Think maybe the check, I think it was the way it was accounted for previously.
Okay.
The check was actually received last year, and then expenditure was pretty much.
Okay, that seems to ring a bell to me.
Yeah.
Under 4290 Emergency Management, is there going to be, or is there a $49,000 or so showing up as revenue?
Yes, that's a grant.
Okay. And my understanding is that Tyler Bridge Project is on schedule at this point.
Yes.
Are they recognizing what's happening with paving and everything national and statewide? Do we have any, are we going to be paving or redoing Briar Hill or Pine Street or Boundary or any other roads this calendar year?
Yep, we've completed the paving.
So if that's the case, it shows 280, 260, 80, I can't read it, available in the shimming and paving budget?
Yes, so probably what will happen is that covered and added to next year along with a block grant. So that it can all be done at once, so two paving.
Sorry, it's stuck on a work.
Perfectly excusable. I just finished asking Kelly questions. I don't know if you had anything on the financials.
I don't know.
Okay. Is any, I guess I'll ask if any member of the audience has any questions on
Maybe it's you.
Okay. In that case, I guess, Kelly, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kelly.
Sure, yeah, okay, so we're on to Daryl, we're five minutes early. Good to go?
Oh, boy. I'm here on behalf of the Abenaki Trails Project. And I know I talked a lot about it during, during different meetings and stuff, but it was pointed out to me that I never actually got permission to install an artistic monument or we started calling it sculpture, but now we're affectionately calling it a plaque, because that's basically what it's going to be. We met with Anna Wells, week or so ago. She pointed out different areas that she thought something would be feasible. And just let me, I don't know if any of you guys follow us on Facebook, but this is basically what we're looking at. It's two feet tall, three feet wide, it may be mounted on stone. I spent two weeks researching different types of stone, different cuts of stone. And then when we met at the park, the artist and Ms. Wells thought that a natural stone would be better. So we have, one of the tribal members has an old quarry on their property, so it's hard opening. And Matt Gershino are going on the 15th to see what, if anything, is there that they can use. The artist is going to be there to see if there's one large enough for this park. When we first started this project, I thought, yeah, it's just gonna be interesting to see what really happened in Hopkinton, if we can find anything. And overall, it's just, I mean, it's kind of a full-time job. We can basically 99.9% prove that there were four different settlements in this area. Hopkinton, West Hopkinton, East Tennecker, Bounty, Warner, Eric, Davisville. It's just been, it's been a while. A lot of the things that, I don't remember, like Mr. Gershino, I think.
Summer.
Had asked, when I first asked about the project, was to get school kids involved. It's been two years, but it's actually going to happen this year, that it will be an educational program, starting off with, I believe, elementary and middle schools. The Hopkinton Historical Society is trying to get the high school interested. By the way, they've been, I don't know if any people mind the Historical Society, but they've been a good partners. Unbelievable. For them, I don't know what it would be. But anyway, getting back to the, I don't want to call it a monument, but that's what basically will be. We just started the project to honor our ancestors and to prove that there were positive things that the Abenaki did. And one that the Abenaki did live here, I don't know if you know the story, 2010, went for the Commission of American Affairs. And there were quite a few legislators and senators that said, if you take the word Abenaki out of the bill, we'll go along with it because no Indians ever lived here. It was a past state. Yeah, anyway, so that's one of the reasons why I started the project, to prove, you're wrong. There are hundreds if not thousands of artifacts that have been found in Hopkinton, around. There are some areas that I think I'm probably going to have to kind of afford you again, because we'd like to look a little deeper in some of the conservation remains that are out there. We have three different archaeologists that work with us, and just hearing things about archaeology, I just figured, oh, they want to go dig stuff. Well, we went to, which we can't, and I had a police officer from taking out this, don't know if it's a new kid. And so the archaeologist called me the day before, since we have landowner's permission to be there. What, cops gonna take us out? He goes, I don't care about the cops. I don't want the landowner to be there. So it was like, we're ethical about everything. We just wanted to go look and see. And it was the quote-unquote Indian chimney at Joe Soviet. It's not an Indian chimney. It's our turtle pit. Dave White was not very happy when we busted that myth. No, since we were kids and he had all the kinds of really neat things to say about him, his ancestors fulfill where that chimney is. So, but anyway. I guess we would like a promotion, your blessing, whatever it's going to take at the Congress or whatever, to install something to commemorate our ancestors.
So. Here's a bit of that.
Okay, the pathway down the river. Park.
It was 20 months. By the gazebo?
You haven't changed a bit, have you?
Clarity of it.
Riverway Park? Just standing at the gazebo, there is a pathway down to the river.
Okay.
To the left, there are some old foundation stones over there, and it's amongst the trees.
Yeah.
My biggest thing is I wanted it up in the open for security reasons.
Sure.
But I walked back up to the bank, and where it will be, it will be tall enough that a little over three feet tall. Anyone could sit, could see it, see some little hand spray paint or whatever. But the other nice thing about the way it's being constructed or however you want, but we were going to go for bronze. BIAS relief. And I thought, oh, raise some money, it'd be no big deal for that. You know, it was $10,000 just for the core. It's nothing about the artist's fees or anything else. So the materials in the core was $10,000. That's not feasible. So we found a material that will look like bronze, but it's actually a resin. And she can pour and pour and pour these plaques. And the artist had originally volunteered her time and so on and so forth, and she still has. But she was able to get a grant through some COVID relief. In that grant, she has to do something with braille, and she's going to incorporate it into this sculpture and signage. So that's not, I mean, that's nowhere near complete. The picture I showed you, but it gives you a rough idea. There'll be some other characters, beer, rabbits and squirrels and baskets and water. Ancestries. So it's supposed to be an ancestor talking to a modern Abenaki man, guiding.
So we'll be down the path that you mentioned, or at the top?
It'll be at the top.
Okay, got it, okay.
Well, we're looking around, and I worked for DOT, so when I see a man with a cover, probably don't want to put anything there. All along that area by the wastewater area. So it was pointed out that, look, over here is, it's under the trees for now. And like, like I said, my concern was security. And when we first set up the project, I talked to Steve before. And I go, I want it somewhere that I know you have to see all the time, because every time I come home from Parker late at night, I always say, close the circuit. He goes, we're not predictable. Well, yeah, yeah, you are. And I'm glad you are sometimes.
That's why we get rid of it.
Yeah, yeah, so, but I don't, with all the other stones that are in here, I don't, I don't foresee vandalism problem in that area. And a lot of people use that path. We've had a couple of different events there, the canoe paddle. We launched a handmade birch bark canoe there. So the second outing we had there was a canoe paddle, which I guess now I found other, should have gotten permission to use to get the hit. But there were like 60 people there. And that prompted me to get into fishing games. So the people that were registering people had some sort of awareness of what someone in a canoe should have. Or someone in a kayak, because there were quite a few people out there who were life preservers. These are, I consider myself an overperson now. I could probably make it down the river fine, get you back up would probably be a different story. And there were a lot of people that we talked about, all Indians, and brought them back. That's why I found out the third seat in the suburb, it doesn't work, it doesn't float back up. So, but, so anyways, I don't know what needs to be done, if there's a form that needs to be filled out, or just your blessing to install an artistic sculpture in the park.
Have we ever had anything like this before? I just don't know if we have like a process.
We had no formal process.
Okay.
The board has it different times approved, like memorial benches.
What do we have to do for the fire station one? Was that?
Ah, you approved that.
Yeah. Would this be on the side of the path that's closer to the railroad equipment building?
Yes.
And have you talked to the depot people, or they have any concerns?
I think this here, Steve was part of the project there, so. I talked to him about
I mean, it's still our property.
Right. And he has a blog about north.
And so, not that this matters, whether we approve it or not. You said three feet, and then the sign says two feet. Is it signed on top of the rock or?
Or it's
Or is it going to be mounted to the face of the rock?
It's going to be mounted to the face. It's technically called fire relief.
Yep, I know it is. But I'm just, that seems low to me, right? I mean, I'm not six feet anymore. I used to be back in the day, but no more. But it seems like you would want that to be a lot.
Well, the stone will be a little bit higher. I just didn't want it to be overly gaudy, or none of us wanted it to be overly gaudy. Take attention away from the rest of the park. See, I'll be honest with you, when I was researching stones, I looked at it all my life. Now I went under the assumption that a professional stone, crafted stone was the way to go. I worked with a poor gentleman at Perry Brothers, two weeks drove him nuts. And then when the artist and Anna go, oh, a natural stone, you better, we're pretty close to that. And I want to push both of them in. Are you kidding me? I knew how much money we had to spend, I went just shy of it. So going with a natural stone is better, because now we have money that we could offer in audit that, something for their services. So if you're going with a natural stone, before anything is done, I can bring you pictures of the stone that Joe's.
And just, we see, foresee any concern on being in Lynch's part? I don't think we do anything out there, but it's always a big concern.
No, I think, and I think he's been a little bit part of the discussion.
Would there be any maintenance issues from?
We would maintain it. We won't have, when we start this whole process, so there's nothing we're going to ask from the town. Anything we create will maintain. So I don't see the tribe going anywhere.
We're soon, do you envision this being lit at all? Is that what you want, a motion?
Yes, we can do a motion officially.
I move that we authorize the, what's the name of your organization?
Abenaki Trails Project.
Abenaki Trails Project to install a plaque slash monument slash, whatever the term of art is. In the mark at the top of this.
All right.
One second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, I think that's unanimous. Thank you for coming in and thank you for all the work you guys are doing. I do follow you on Facebook, and I'm a member of the Historical Society, and you guys are doing awesome stuff, so thank you.
Now I can go outside. I'm so nervous.
Thank you so much, Neil.
Thank you. All right. Old business, first under old business is the speed limit ordinance.
Seized the draft amendment based on what you had talked about. Um, to clarify, I went back to the minutes, and there was, I think the Boundary section had been changed at the meeting, and the new section got added, but the old one didn't get completed. So this is, that's now accurate. So basically, it adds from Pennacook Road, instead of it being 30, all the way from the white school hotel to, to Main Street. This would have it be 30. No, just ways up to where the sort of congestion is, and then it would drop to 25 from there down. Which would include Pennacook Road, and then you go on to Indian Ridge, which is already 25. So basically, you come from 281, which is where the houses start, down to Main Street or or Hopkinton Road on both sides. Which I think is what you asked for.
So we did get a couple of emails about Dustin. I don't know if people saw those come in. So obviously, we've just been talking about the Pennacook section. So I don't know what people's thoughts are. We got Dustin and then a couple of more general. Um, although Broadfield must be 25.
Right.
But I think maybe that and then another email about signage in Kentucky. I think those are less related to the ordinance and more related to like signage and general safety issues. So I think the only other real speed limit issue would be Dustin, which is currently 35. I have been told slash experienced, people definitely go like over 50 on that road. So I think we got three emails about it.
Which all came today, so we haven't looked at that or reviewed it. I know the last time the ordinance was updated, that was all of that. So, but I haven't talked to any departments about it, because it was just
Okay, well, and I apologize, they did send them in earlier, but they came to like the form, which I thought you also got the form, but it just comes to me when it's
Well, it depends.
Ah, okay.
So if they email just you, it's just
All right, I apologize, I did not get those out sooner, okay.
Dustin Road right now is getting all the traffic for the
Yes.
Station, right?
Yeah, but even without the detour, I've heard.
No, right, definitely, but
Yeah, but yeah. Yeah. All right, so then we can move forward with this, just talking about the whole section of Pennacook. And perhaps we can revisit Dustin and then I think maybe we could have another conversation with Chief Hennessy about where we might be able to improve signs. Because I know it gets complicated, because the state controls Main Street and Kentucky.
So the ordinance will schedule a public hearing in two weeks. So you could always, people can come and comment on Dustin if they wanted to add that.
And we could potentially, in that meeting, move Dustin up if we wanted to?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
You could do. Well, we'll publicize it without doing that, but I'll also find out from
You said move Dustin up and we move down, as in slower?
Sorry, yeah, I meant having Dustin move up the list, yes, not faster, although people could argue me. Sorry, yeah, I meant I meant having Dustin move up the list, yes, not faster, although people could argue me. Um. All right, great, so do we need to do anything on?
You need a motion to move this to public hearing, are we good?
Uh, no, I think we're good if you're.
So the public hearing will be in two weeks?
Yes.
So will it be? Before our. Meeting or have it at five thirty and then start a meeting or?
Uh, generally, we do the public hearings at six.
Okay.
Start the meeting and then. Public hearing.
Okay. Right, so it'll be the twenty-sixth.
Done, okay.
Is yeah, is to join me with the school board on next meeting or is that?
Yeah, that's um October.
Okay, good.
All right, so thanks for that, Neil. I think we're good on the ordinance. So next is election update.
Uh, tomorrow's the election. Everything is. Everything is set up, ready to go. The ballot machine was tested. There were a couple of members in the public here who watched that. Um, but in general, I think everything's. Kind of, we did use the Plexiglas, but for the most part, the COVID protocols, there aren't any anymore. So, but so it's a little easier to set up.
Mm hmm.
There, so.
So Stephen's out all day. I don't know what year of the opening is tomorrow.
I'm good in the morning. I'm gonna take like an hour at nine and like an hour in the afternoon to grab kids, but.
Okay. And you're around for some of that?
I'll be there at eleven.
Okay.
Through seven.
And Ken, you're?
I'll I'll be there most of the day. Uh, Devin Norris is gonna be uh my alternate. Actually, we'll be there first thing.
Okay, great. I'm gonna try to be there first thing. Um, I might have to deal with the drop off, but I should be there almost all day, so. All right, great. Um, actually, and before we move on, so just on the speed limit issues. Can we, and by we, I mean you, Neil, reach out to TJ about having him come. To our next meeting. Up to talk about sign issues and. Like Tookie and Broad Cove.
Yeah, what's signs?
So so the Nichols. Um, well, then we can. Give it a little more thought than it's just, so I don't know if you saw the email we got about signage and Kentucky and speeds and trying to better mark like. Crosswalks and his general concern around safety in Kentucky and then. Um, I mean, maybe this is a conversation that. Could be had offline too about Broad Cove, but I don't know if you saw the. The email today, um, but there is that section when you turn off of Briar Hill on the Broad Cove and it is. A total blind spot, a few of those first driveways. Um, and so hearing like pets getting killed next to people's driveways is pretty disturbing. Um, I've personally turned in and out of some of those driveways and it's really, really hard to see people become flying. And then person who flipped a car like. Just on their own, I think people go really fast on Broad Cove, so it should be twenty-five according to our ordinance, but we might need fresh. Twenty-five signs and then I don't know, um. I don't know if maybe we could add a sign that says. Maybe like a clear, you know. Blind drive or whatever the signage is.
There was, there was one, can't remember what it said exactly, towards the beginning, which I think isn't there anymore, so.
Or it might be overgrown, like I know there's one on Old Hill that says like blind driveway or something that's really hard to see because the trees have sort of blocked it. Um. But that's just a spot that I think. That and there's probably, you know, others in Kentucky where we could freshen up the signs and so maybe we don't need TJ to come in, but. Um, at least chat with him and.
Our signs are, is that uh that Chief Hennessy or is that DBW?
That's DBW.
DBW, okay.
Oh, okay, all right, so.
I mean, it kind of seems like there's a ton of signs all over the place that might need updating. I mean. Would you worth it when like the roads committee?
Yeah.
With like a a list of. Of ones that they could evaluate again?
Sure, we can put in our budget. What's what is, so we replace them when they have to given. The the what the budget line and stuff.
So I guess they would be more appropriate than the police department to talk through. Um, yeah, the Kentucky concerns seem to be sort of. We hear those come up a lot and then I feel like we feel like our hands are tied because the state controls so much of it, but I did see the state.
The little, the little man, that point or the cone or something and.
And one of the crosswalks?
Yeah, those did not last long.
What happened? Did people hit them?
Yes.
That's disturbing.
In a lot of cases, I think there's probably trucks that were making it to know that they hit it.
Yeah.
That arrows.
I I and I have to say, you know, I read that email. I had the opposite experience in Kentucky Village. If I get to one of those crosswalks and I hesitate for a second, people stop. And I don't know, maybe it's just because I'm a big giant. It it I've just, when I read that, I thought, geez, that that doesn't happen to me, so.
Yeah, an- anecdotally, I walk my dog downtown every morning and do the crosswalking. Yes, you know, ninety-five percent of the time, uh, the driver stopped. And one time the driver didn't, and there happened to be a police car who pulled them over.
Oh, that's satisfying. Um. All right, well, I'll take another look at the, I don't know if there were like specifics in that email about the Kentucky signage.
Look at the. Kentucky Village is a hard place to walk through. So if there's anything we can do to make that easier.
Yeah.
That would be good.
Yeah.
You have to have. If you have a crosswalk, you have to have it come from a sidewalk to a sidewalk.
Right.
Because I know people have asked for crosswalks in other places and you can't have it go into a parking lot or something like that.
Mm hmm.
Especially like from Mr. Mike's to every day. There's, there's no, there's not two sidewalks for those to connect.
Mm hmm. Okay. All right, so scratch my idea of talking to Chief Hennessy about that. Um. All right, so next under old business is pay by bag update. So we have enough.
Yeah, I guess I'll talk to you.
All right, cool.
Yeah, so I mean, it's just been a while. Um, I've been doing a bunch of research into it, um, talking to a lot of people and there are some interesting things that I found that I want to make sure the ball keeps. Keeps moving on. Last we kind of talked, um, we're. We're thinking about the idea of coming up with a subcommittee to talk. Um, or to kind of come up with some solutions. Um, going through all of the kind of research, there's some interesting things that may make sense or may not make sense. So I just want to talk to your stuff and then. Um, a couple recommendations we we can talk through, so um, first the history, so. That, I mean. A lot of people may may know this, but some more in-depth history, so I, the joint station agreement with Webster started in nineteen seventy-five. Was really interesting to me at least is in uh the Webster annual town minutes. One of their main reasons that they listed for um joining uh the transportation was to improve recycling. So at least conceptually, they're very much higher. We should think that they're very much aligned with our values in terms of wanting to reduce waste. Um, the 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 contracts that we have, I think it's been amended a couple of times, um, but the core of it is kind of. Like a nothing happens or everything blows up at the same time. That's kind of how the the agreement is structured. Um, so everyone has equal share of decision-making, which basically means we can't really change much unless everyone wants to do the exact same thing. Um, but what's also really interesting is that if anyone decides to leave, the other town has to compensate the leaving town, which is like.
And and the only way that agreement can be changed is by voting both town meetings.
Yes, right, so it's it's basically like, right, um, it's very interesting, but what is really interesting to me is that at any point in time, we could just say we're we're leaving now and then they have to. Pay us for three quarters of the value of the transportation, which is. Silly, I think. Um, so then in twenty-ten, we did a pay by bag program. Um, and I mean. Conceptually, the 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 main reason to do a pay by bag program are to reduce the tax burden or at least reduce the property tax burden and then also reduce the amount of waste going to the transportation. Um, and then what I didn't know um is in twenty-fourteen, there was a select committee to evaluate the program and evaluate our solid waste and our transportation stuff. Um, and they, I tried to reach out to a couple of people that were on that committee. Um, I didn't hear back, but they did publish a pretty. Uh, substantial report, um, and their main recommendation was moving to curbside pickup. But there was a couple of interesting takeaways from that, so we'll we'll keep talking about it.
I met with that committee too, so I would say no.
Yes.
True.
Um. So in terms of the pay by bag overview, I went through a lot of information and um Bonnie was sent me a a lot of information that was really helpful. Um, so I mean, the the core purpose is it creates incentive to to use less, waste less, which reduces the cost. Uh, and reduces how much we're sending into, or how much we're wasting and transferring out. Um, it also reduces the property tax burden. It shifts the cost over to, instead of being in our property taxes, it shifts the cost that are paid for our waste into purchasing green bags. Um, and effectively turns it from a net expense into a net revenue or a budget, which is great. Um, and theoretically, it doesn't actually change how much individual person is spending on waste. Um, they're spending more per bag to get rid of their waste, but um that incentive is aligned with how much they're reducing their waste. So uh it's kind of like a win-win-win. Um, what was was really interesting is looking at all of the different uh pay by bag programs across New Hampshire and Vermont. There's an average of fifty-five percent uh reduction in waste in those communities, so that's really good. Um, that doesn't include our community. Um, th- those are communities where they can actually implement and uh and execute the program well. So I I tried to come up with metrics in terms of how well we're doing. Um, it's really, really hard to do. Uh, it's really hard to come up with anything because we don't have, all of our, all of our statistics include Webster's uh numbers, which complicate things. Um, we also don't know how many people are using curbside pickup. We have estimates, but we don't know, um, so it really complicates things. Also, we don't know how many people switched from curbside pickup before and after the implementation, so we can't really look at numbers there. Um, and we don't know how many people in Hockington are using the green bag from the other transfer station, so it's like basically all of these unknowns make it pretty much impossible to look at anything. Um. Anything well, uh, the the best kind of number I could come up with is recycling rates. Um, because all of the curbside pickup people don't do recycling, so anyone that was doing recycling that continued doing recycling later. Um, they'd still have to use the transportation and it's not, I mean, it's not a great number, but it's it's a. It it's the best number to look at, so I have a graph next um on that. So this is a chart of uh the recycling rates. Uh, I mean, it, there was an uptick in twenty-ten. Um, and then it it kind of came back down. I mean, it's not like a significant, it's not like a fifty percent jump rate. So like, good, um, we're doing good recycling, but it it wasn't like a green bag got made. We saw this massive increase of recycling and then um. It's been decreasing, I think, it just kind of, it's there. Um.
Thomas, you didn't have anything past two thousand fourteen?
I did, um. It's. It past two thousand fourteen, you kind of start to get into like the COVID numbers. I don't know why I stopped it in twenty-fourteen, not. Not like twenty.
That's from the council committee thing.
Yeah. Yeah, um, oh, that's what it was. I, there was a shift in the way that metrics were evaluated and reported. Um. Around that time, like where these numbers came from, I tried to keep it consistent and where it was being reported from, there's like a pretty significant. Jump in the numbers, like not, that wouldn't correlate to anything other than all of a sudden they're including some other giant portion of weight inside of there.
It would be interesting to graph on the same chart the waste weight.
Yes.
To compare, did recycle, when recycling go, did? Did the actual, going to the hopper go down or did that go up?
Yeah, I I can definitely do that.
Or not more to them.
I can definitely do that. Um, so some other metrics that are kind of interesting, uh, from what I can gather, uh, basically half the town uses curbside pickup at one point. Um, so from talking to people, getting reports from empty transport. Um, and then also the, I came up with numbers that were about half, and then also the twenty-fourteen select committee also reported about. From their findings, about half of people use curbside pickup, which is way more than I expected. Um, and then also, again, this is kind of an estimate because you have to use averages and you have to use like some national numbers that. Should be close but not exact. Um, it's likely that only about eleven to twelve percent of the town is using green bags. Um, that's based on how our green bag revenue numbers, how many green bags are being used. And then what's likely to be an average amount of waste going into those green bags, um, that comes to about. Uh, about twelve, eleven to twelve percent of the town using green bags, so that's really not great. Uh, and then also that the revenue per bag is also a little bit of a rough estimate because it's it's based on similar estimates of weight per bag. But right now, it looks like if we're like, if everyone was using the green bags, based on the price of the green bags, we're losing about twelve cents uh per green bag being used. Um, just based on how much we're buying green bags from for and how much we're selling them. And that also kind of makes sense based on we haven't changed. The the value and I'm pretty sure that in twenty-ten, it was priced relatively close to the cost of transferring out. Um, which it shouldn't be, it should be significantly higher than the cost to to transfer out, but um, we started about then and then it's been ten years worth of. A rising transportation cost, so it 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 comes out about about there.
And the price of bags has to be changed by town.
Yes.
That was a good original order.
We have to get that on one.
So, um, so through all of this, um. I wasn't trying to come up with like specific uh solutions, but I was trying to think of like all of the different solutions out there. And then like how that kind of fits into things that we would need to do, whether or not it makes sense to be working with Webster or some committee or the. The Waste Reduction Committee or how all that kind of goes. So I mean, in in terms of the goals of whatever we're trying to do, obviously, it's reduce waste and reduce costs. Um, and solution wise, I mean theoretically, the pay by bag program should do this very well in other. Communities, it does do this very well when it's implemented and enforced well, um, this this theoretically should work well. Um, and then also like what other options are out there, so, um, for example, we could. Withdraw from the transportation and then take the revenue from Webster that we get from that to build a new transportation and then we could. Implement and enforce a green bag program, so like, that's not a good idea, but you know, like, I'm just saying, there are a lot of things that are just kind of out in the air in terms of what we could look at. So in particular, I kind of gridded them out on the next slide. Um, and sorry, some some specific, and I just kind of mapped them out into easy things, difficult things and uh cheap and expensive. Um, for example, leaving the agreement and building a transportation is both difficult and expensive. Uh, but something that I found that would be probably a really good first step is just asking Webster to join the pay by bag program. Going through their last. Fifteen years worth of town meetings, they've never voted on it. Um, and their entire reason for joining the transportation in the first place was to increase their ability to do recycling, so theoretically. And if it makes sense for us to do it revenue-wise, it should also make sense for them to do it revenue-wise. Um, I'm sure there are reasons why it's never been voted on before, but it's never actually been voted on, so it seems like an easy. Place to start, might just be asking them to do it. Um.
Been in a lot less meetings.
Yeah, yeah, totally, definitely. No, no, I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. Um. In in terms of, yeah, but like in in terms of the challenge to actually implement something, that's like, you might as well ask.
Mm hmm.
Um. Before we try to do anything drastic, like. Curbside pickup or changing days or all all these other things that could. Be worse. Yeah. Um. Yeah, so in terms of next steps, um, because I I again, like the the main purpose of all of this is to just kind of throw out a lot of the research. Um, and then also just kind of talk, make sure that we're not just dropping the ball on this. Um, I think like next steps wise, the the, obviously, we need to get the. Um, the transportation committee voice out, so working with the Webster Select Board to make sure that we fill out those seats, that they actually do stuff, they have quorum and do stuff. Uh, and then working with Webster, probably the transportation committee in Webster, to actually. Vote or to to see if Webster would vote on the pay by bag program, even if it's gonna be a no, we might as well. Vote on it, or ask them to vote on it, um, before we try to do anything substantially different. Um, and then, I mean, it, everyone kind of has ideas around ways that it could be, the current program can be improved. Um, pricing needs to be adjusted for sure. Um, a lot of people made comments about bad quality, stuff like that, so are there things that we could do in the meantime to just make it better for people? And then all of this, like, right now, it kind of seems like there's a a weird. Stagnation point where it's like only eleven percent of the town is using green bags right now, and until we come up with a better solution, what do we want to do with it? Before then, so do we continue it, do we pause it until we have a better solution, or do we drop the program until we have a different solution? So that's worth discussing. That's all I got.
Thank you, Thomas. That was. Putting some. Boundaries around a topic that is. Not not easy to do that.
Well, again, Neil's Neil said. Well, again, Neil, Neil said it quite, quite well. I've been to less meetings.
But I think it's a fair, it's, I mean, I think it's a fair thing. It seems very obvious and basic. And, but I agree that even if the answer is like a hard no, makes it worth the conversation.
Yeah, the boards in the past, which doesn't mean now, refused to move it forward at all.
Interesting, okay.
So there definitely were discussions at that time. But also I think they're looking at, thinking it might be time to update the agreement and do some of those things. So it may be a good time to, to have those discussions.
Like, to me, the main thing is right now, if only eleven percent of the town is using green bags, that seems like a weird thing to keep going. So I'm not interested to hear that. I, I guess, yeah, I mean, I know it's complex. We can go sit, we can go sit at the transfer station and just count the number of green bags that come through. It's probably going to be one in eighty.
Was the green bag revenue last year, you know?
It's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year usually. Because of COVID, the last few years have been.
Family is twenty.
I mean, eight hundred households.
We know, we know that nine-hundred is a third of the town, about eleven percent. My entire, my household doesn't use nearly that much. I can say.
I mean, it's an approximate number.
It's, all of these numbers are extremely rough. But all of the numbers also match up pretty well to what people are seeing. I mean, if you go to the transfer station right now, it's one in three, one in three is not, is not using.
Excuse me, it, it's not one. I think green bag.
But hold on, hold on. So we're recording, so if you, if you would just hold on a sec, we can have you come up and speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, if you could just hold on one second. Okay, so is there anything else?
No, no, that's, yeah, that's all I got.
So, okay, so if you don't mind coming up so we can hear you and record you. Okay.
But it is extremely frustrating to don't give green bag. And there in the hopper is a C of white. And so if there can't be any enforcement of the green bags, why are we doing it?
Yeah, I see.
Is there a potential for some enforcement?
Well, cer- certainly if Webster were to come on board, then it would be much easier to do some kind of enforcement. Without them, you're going to have, have somebody standing there saying, you live in Hockington, Webster.
Yeah, I mean, looking, looking, there are, there are lots more solutions that could probably be looked at. But like, the, the easy, like the easy simple one is you just pay someone to stand there all day and look at the bags going to the hopper, right? Which, well, we could, we could hire someone to do that, but it's not necessarily a great solution. We could do things like alternating days where Webster goes on one day, Hockington goes on the other day, which then makes it easier because it's just all the same part of the bags. But again, that means changing the amount of days and the transition is open, hiring more people. Like, these things become very complicated very quickly. Anything, anything about enforcement that isn't all or nothing becomes very, really hard. I think this is why the twenty-fourteen subcommittee recommended curbside, because that's a method where you could do that. Everyone is going through the exact same procedure. Curbside picks, only picks up green bags. The green bags are then paid for curbside. It seems to be why that's recommended, but.
Now, with the curbside, you're considering, how did the recyclables factor in?
I, I have no idea. And I'm not saying we're considering curbside. I'm just saying that these are, these are ways where you have everybody doing the exact same thing. But until everybody's doing the exact same thing, it's very hard to do enforcement without making it really expensive.
What happened? So that was recommended, and then did the town vote?
It also had a million dollar price tag.
Yeah, I, I, I was, I was on the.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, I was on the board then and we did look at, you know, if, if we did what the impact would be on the tax rate. It was very high and it did not take into account commercial and industrial customers. And what was happening to their waste. They have to pay a higher tax rate and they wouldn't get the benefit of this. And what do you do with real rural parts of the town?
So, so the report showed that it actually would be cheaper for people in the long run to pay the extra tax for curbside than to drive to the transfer. But that's, it, it.
Well, I mean, that, that's what the report said. Yeah, ideally the increased cost is kind of fine because you increase the cost and transfer over the green bags, the increased cost reduced waste, which is the primary goal. And then also we eliminated the cost of the program by funding the green bags. But I mean, like, this is another complicated thing where it seems like if Webster was just on board with green bags, we don't have to do anything, doesn't cost anything.
We still need to raise the price. We need, we need that.
Yeah, so that is.
Voter committee to bring that to the board, not to.
Yeah.
But if only, that's crazy.
Yeah.
So.
And, and maybe you decide with that raised price, add enforcement time.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Pay for some, for some more.
So it seems like some things we can do now that are actual, like, complete things. We can, I mean, we've got to get those seats filled on the transfer station committee or whatever it's called. And then I think having the conversation with Webster makes sense, even if we think that might not take us anywhere. So I don't know historically what the approach has been. Has it been a board-to-board meeting or, okay?
Yeah, and it's given where they're at, that's probably effective. There, there are already scheduled to come in when the budget comes, but maybe it's worth doing that before that.
Okay.
Can we push for that to be face-to-face?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great. So then, yeah. Oh, yeah, I just have one more. I was just going to say, I'm just going through my list, so we'll do that and ask about the pay-by-bags. And then I, I think if the Waste Reduction Committee has thoughts on things that could be done short of us having like strict enforcement, I think that would be great. So anyway, Jenny, if you want to chat.
Thanks. And that was exactly what I wanted to speak about. So there isn't much signage at the transfer station about using green bags. Like at the entrance, there's nothing that says Hockington residents should be using green bags. There's nothing over the hopper that says that. Many people that are moving into town don't even know we have a green bag program. So it makes, that's a very low-cost thing to get the word out of. There would be some sense that they are supposed to be using that.
Then I think, you know, at the time, it seemed like a great idea to suspend it during COVID. That hurt us a lot. Because people got used to not using them and just throw it all in the hopper and everything's fine.
But to put some accountability with a signage as they're going in and when you're there and where they did the bags.
So it makes sense if the Reduction Committee made a proposal like that. Because we do have money in the recycling revolving fund that certainly could be spent on that.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be helpful. All right, thanks, Jay.
Yes. Hi, Catherine. I just wanted to point out that the, the driving force of doing it when we initially got the program in was strictly recycling. Reducing the tax burden was a selling point, but it wasn't the goal, although it's always a good goal. I remember having a long conversation with someone, not sure of the town, so I won't name the town. But they had tried the sticker approach because we thought, well, you'll use less plastic. You know, people will be double bagging things. Seemed like an easy approach, but they switched from stickers to the bags because they said too many people would go in and just as they were ready to throw it over, they'd rip the sticker off. Apparently they weren't the kind that were really stuck. And then they would just put it on the bag next to it. So we opted to do bag approach instead of sticker approach. I do believe that enforcement was better when the program first started. And I don't think they had to hire somebody all day to stand there. I think maybe if you start with stronger enforcement, you can ease up a little bit and have it be a little more intermittent. People will be more in the habit and they know they're expected to use the bags. I have one question. When we first, well, two things. I did want to concur with you, Neil, that we tried hard to bring Webster on board because we knew it would be important to have both towns doing it. It was a no-go, but that was a long time ago and maybe it's different now. It's definitely worth a try. My recollection, I could be wrong, but my recollection was that the ordinance was such that if a, a person were picking up curbside and not wanting to use the green bags, that they were not allowed to bring the trash to our transfer station, that they shifted elsewhere. Is that still the case?
Uh, no, that's, that was changed.
So that may be why we're seeing mounds of white bags. If a lot of people switch to providers who would pick up their trash without picking up recycling or requiring green bags and they're still allowed to bring it there, it certainly makes the number of green bags in the hopper look pretty small. When did that change, do you know?
Three months ago.
Oh, recently. Thanks.
Yeah.
So did the commercial folks put it down the same hopper as the residential folks? I've never seen.
Well, it comes from the other side. They back up and dump into, so when you look in the hopper, you're seeing both commercial and whoever has dumped that dead.
But I would second what the lady said. When I go, I put my green bag down and often there are no green bags. It's black, it's white, but no. And, sorry, you know, my mind. I have a stick on my car that you are meant to have to use the transfer station. I thought it identified me as being from Hockington versus Webster, so you can identify pretty quick if somebody has a stick on their hopper. And they are, they are a color, color crew.
Yeah.
I agree, Jeff, with your comment. Thank you. And thank you, Catherine. That I think people have gotten very lax. And I think, Catherine, you just made this comment that if we, if you have enforcement in some sense, then it sort of resets the norms around what's expected. Because I know I definitely see lots of people just throwing, you know, non-green bags in. But if there's no sort of like expectation that you're actually going to use them, then people feel free not to. Or the comment about being new in town, I think that's very fair, that there's not a clear way of knowing really unless somebody pulls you aside and tells you and explains it to you. So it seems like there are probably, these are little things, maybe in, in addition to signage, that the Waste Reduction Committee could come up with maybe a list of like things we could do to raise awareness, at the very least, while we work on these other things concurrently. Bonnie, did you want to say something?
Bonnie, Chris Smith Field, um, thank you for all the work you're doing, Thomas. I'm glad that somebody's a point person on this. I think it would be very helpful for the Waste Reduction Committee to look at this in more detail, if you could provide what your sources are. Because we had a lot of numbers up here and I'm not sure where they came from. And I have a lot of numbers too, and they, depending on the source, they don't match up. It's really hard to know what's what.
Yeah.
In terms of enforcement, I noticed on your graph, you had, you know, mine is going from cheap to expensive. And we had enforcement that's being expensive. And I wonder about that, like, what was your assumption that that would be the more expensive option?
More expensive than?
I don't, I don't know.
Just, they're just relative to each other. And also the expensive part is kind of interesting because if you enforce the green bag program, you get more revenues. And then that, in a lot of cases, offsets, offsets the expensive. But it, these were all meant to just be in terms of relative to each other. Where do they fall? Is this thing harder or easier than that thing? Or is it more, will it cost more actual dollars than the other?
Because that, it, it made me think that there was an assumption, and I've heard this discussion, that it would be very expensive to have it enforced because you'd have to pay somebody full-time to stand there and enforce it. But when I think about something like speed limits, I mean, we don't have police car on every road all over town every day. So I think once people know that police cars are going to show up from time to time, and they have times when they're very active, then people get it in their mind that, you know, anytime, you know, I could show up from the transfer station without my green bags and.
Yeah, that's true.
So I don't know that we would have to pay somebody to enforce all the time. One thing that in the twenty-fourteen report, I don't know if you remember, but one of the charges for them was to talk about what the environmental impacts were of the different options. And I don't think they even touched on that, except they recommended that we not have septic anymore.
You mean a bit like, like the driving and emissions cost?
It wasn't clear. It just said that was one of the things, environmental impact, and there was no specifics about what that meant. And there was nothing in the different options they presented about whether one was.
It was a couple of weeks ago that I read the report. I remember seeing some, I remember, I don't know if it was in that report, but I remember reading substantially about that exact issue. And you kind of mentioned it too. I re, I remember it being a pretty big part of that.
Yeah.
Report that I read.
Source, because I have your report right over there.
Yeah. Okay.
But this year, I think this is the first time, and I don't know if anybody noticed it, but in our town report, the NARA, I think they sent these to all of the towns that are part of the Resource Recovery Association. And they listed what we all accomplished. They had our recycling numbers. And for example, for Hockington, they have our numbers. And for aluminum cans, we recycled nine point two tons. And that means we conserved enough energy to power fifteen point six three homes per year. So to me, that's huge environmental. So I guess what I'm getting at is if we could really define what our goals are, obviously cost and reduce weight, waste. You know, one, one of the things about reducing waste is that we recycle more. That's one of the main ways to do it and get the compostables out. And that has a huge benefit in terms of climate change. I mean, we are saving so much in carbon emissions by things that don't have to be manufactured, can be reprocessed or reused. And, and with, with all the, you know, the options of having everybody drive to the transfer station with their trash and their recyclables. And for me, like, we have a truck come, we have memorials from, we have our trash. And then we all drive to the transfer station with our recyclables. And when you think about emissions, it doesn't make any sense. And I, I really hope that the select board will keep emissions in mind. It's a huge impact of, you know, whatever we do. And I think in the options in the twenty-fourteen report, they, whatever option three was, it was a curbside pickup. But it listed that the highest recycling rate would be forty-five to fifty percent. And that's a lot of emission capture. So, you know, if we can make that a goal, I think that would be worth it.
Okay, thanks, Bonnie.
Can you come to our meetings?
Yeah, is it, wait, is this week?
Yes.
This Thursday? That, okay, next Thursday.
So that's Thursday, most of it.
What's the date?
It's the third Thursday, isn't that this week?
Yeah, this week.
Yeah, it's the fifteenth.
Is it here? No. Yes, the precinct, the village precinct meeting or something, yeah.
Yes.
Hopefully, yeah, the precinct meeting is this week, the same time.
Okay.
But yeah, I'm, I'll, I'll email you that.
Okay, and before the meeting, did you get us?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, I'll send it there. Yeah. Yeah, definitely. Yeah, I'll send it there. Yeah.
Anything else for three men? Okay, thank you all. Thank you, Thomas.
Yeah.
Thank you all for the discussion. So we can move on to. New business. We have the joint meeting with the school board.
Sure, we're proposing October eleventh, which is Tuesday. Actually, I was thinking Monday and the school board's meeting Tuesday, but it's a holiday Monday. So we're proposing the eleventh at five thirty in the auditorium at the high school and then. Sure, they can give us a room and we can separate and they'll probably stay there.
Okay.
That would have been our regular meeting.
That would have been the regular, as it turned out. Both boards were meeting that same night. So we have a, we have a joint meeting and then we have a separate meeting right after. Yes, and they'll have their. So think about things, agenda items.
Okay. So next is twenty twenty two.
You have the MS one to sign, your sign file. I'll just note that. Even though we've added property with the adjustments, it actually came in one point five million less than we had predicted. Which is why it's always hard to predict because you don't know what's going to go up and what's going to go down. But we should be fine with the revenue that we have, and now we can still meet our tax rate target.
And scheduling of the revow.
So Jeff, it was the assessor call. He just wanted us to be aware, which surprised me a bit, that as. The, all the sales were looked at for twenty twenty two, everything is selling between forty and forty five percent. Above assessed value. So it's possible he wanted to know if we wanted to move the revow up to twenty twenty three. It would be scheduled anyways for twenty twenty four. If, if there was a bigger lag in there. We'd say we probably should do it because after those numbers, DRA is going to say you better do a revow. But we're going to already be in the process of starting the next year, so I'm not. Sure, we don't really, we didn't plan to do it next year, so we have it built into the CIP for, for twenty twenty.
Numbers are forty percent higher?
Yeah, I, I've been tracking. Update with all the sales. So I, now I have the last hundred sales and it averages. Percent is the average above the assessed value, everything selling for pretty much across. Yeah, it's pretty consistent.
Put my house on the ark tomorrow.
So move out of town.
Okay, well, I think, I mean. I don't know if others have strong opinions on moving. It seems like twenty four. Would be easier.
Yeah, to probably prep for and get ready because we're, we're rather than to be. And, and really what it means, what we don't have yet, I haven't seen yet, is what's called the coefficient of dispersion. Which is how far off different, different strata. Antiques, eighty percent under assessed, which they were. Versus, versus ranches, ranches, which are ten percent over that. But my sense is it's pretty much across the board. So even though the tax rate would drop substantially, if you were to. When was the last one done? Two thousand nineteen. So they're scheduled every five years. That's how we plan it. We do twenty percent, review twenty percent of the properties. Is a clean review that will make sure that the data is correct, but then the statistical changes are done.
Kevin deviated from five year cycle.
It used to be, that is correct. We, we've done it. Yeah, for quite a few, we've done three since I've been here. So this one, we're coming up on the fourth. And it's been every five years.
I would suggest just staying with what we're around.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather stick with, yeah, unless there's like a really, really strong reason to move it up.
Only real reason is the tax rate will go way down.
That's right.
That should go way down.
That doesn't mean your tax bill goes.
I don't, I have to believe you. I know how the game is played. From a public perception perspective, a much lower tax rate.
You mean I should be arguing for it?
Although when everyone gets those first values, they forget that the tax rate will actually drop and they're going to be paying the same tax rate on this forty percent increased value.
All right, well. Seems like there's general consensus on sticking with. The twenty four.
Sounds good.
Anything else for town? We're now in the town administrator updates. I don't know what else you have.
Sure, we received our food control payment for a hundred and ninety three thousand, which is always good to receive. Are the other big money that comes from the state is room and meals and that will come on December thirty first. So we're working to figure out, and I know town two, who's the oldest resident? We're trying to narrow that down so that the Boston Coast King can be given out, kind of missed that during COVID. I'm working with the butters of those steeded properties. Hopefully, the ones that you had talked about before will get there so we can finalize that and get everything else auctioned off. Tyler Bridge, we actually had some good news. It wasn't quite as bad as the further they got in there. So it would be a little less than I had told you last time, we're still figuring that out. Barn work is moving forward. The engineer is coming in on October fifth. Some test kits dug to see the other side of the foundation. Tomorrow, storage containers are coming to get some of this stuff out and build the grounds is. To move stuff to the rescue squad building. So that is all underway. This week I met with some of the Kimball Cabin people that, that are talking about the pavilion. They know that if they ever have a final plan and final numbers, they need to come and meet with the board and share that plan. But they have connected with the Timber Guild. Timber framers or Timber Build Guild. Which seems like a, a great thing and it could be a weekend and a learning experience and built that way. So. But it's a fairly substantial cost, but. That that will be funded. That wouldn't be funded privately. And I think. Trying to catch up on all the other things. We're ready for the election. CIP committee is scheduling their meeting. All of the CIP information is due this week. Just given our normal placement schedule, our numbers are horrible because everything is so much more expensive. So we're doing that and budgets are due October.
Do you have a date for when first budget presentations will be coming here?
Yes, it's the first, it's your first meeting in November. You have that scheduled. It's the first two meetings, first two Mondays in November, and then you have two more meetings.
Okay, thank you, Neil.
What is the status of the rescue squad?
We own it. It's our building. It's.
Do we have any plans?
Only temporary plans for buildings and grounds to operate out there. But then after that. I think that's a good question. Not that nobody's committed, lots of people want it, as far as. We're putting stuff in there, but right now it seems like a good place to, for that temporary use. So. Buildings and grounds has gone through it and are looking at it. For example, the fasteners on the metal need to be replaced, so they're doing some of that, just making sure it's.
I'm just going to move other up if everyone's okay with that, so we can just keep talking and then do public forum if anyone wants to talk and then go into non-public.
I guess following up on Neil's comment about the Timber Framers Guild, they're an international group that. Does a lot of projects in this country and elsewhere. I have invited Neil to join the meeting when we met with him and. It's, it, it sounds very interesting. It'll be an educational thing for the town. Lot of publicity. They'll, they'll try to get a lot of different groups involved and. It's been made clear donations have to cover the cost. It's not coming out of the town budget. And there's the potential for a major donor. Anything on Porsche Tavern?
I am working. For a new surveyor because, so I have numerous calls out.
On September twenty three, the New Hampshire Municipal Association is having their legislative policy.
Had that pulled up. That was my other too. Oh no, I'm glad you flagged it.
Okay, I, I, I've been in past years, but you know, I'll, I'll go unless somebody else would like to go.
So this is the yearly legislative policy conference, and so you would go as our voting delegate, correct?
I, I'd go unless.
And we usually review, don't we normally review the proposals together and?
Yes, generally they narrow, the committees narrow it down and we get those in advance.
Okay, so we don't have that.
I have not seen that.
Okay.
Except we're not meeting.
I know.
No, we wish.
Is this?
Received.
Is this where we vote or is this?
So each member municipality has one vote at the policy conference. Each governing body is asked to appoint a voting delegate to cast your municipalities vote on the legislative policy proposal. So it sounds like you would be voting.
I, I represented, I've continued in the revenue and finance committee.
So it looks like maybe they do have their policy positions.
I'll check it, so it's very possible.
This link is very detailed. I feel like we generally, in general, we are aligned with any may.
For the most part, they're, they're. They're looking out for municipalities to try not to be radical in any one direction.
Certainly on my committee. They didn't support anything that I thought was harmful or. Town.
Okay.
As Neil said, they're, you know, they're very much looking out for the towns and cities.
Yeah. This is just a draft. I'm just kidding. It looks pretty reasonable. I mean, I trust your judgment, Ken, as our voting person. I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on the municipal association. Now, if you're willing to be the. Delegate again.
Sure.
That would be great, okay.
And then I guess, you know, not for this meeting, but. Think about if we want to have a, some kind of an electric committee for the town, whether it's to look at. Community power or the, the hydro dam and contiguous village. Maybe the transfer station. A lot of different, you know, potential things that fall under, could fall under that.
Anything else on your list? Okay. Anyone else have other? I just wanted to say since I was late, thank you, Ken, for starting the meeting, but also, I don't know if you already. Said that this was already mentioned, but just thank you to you and Neil and Deb Norris and Norm.
Yeah, Norm was here, so I had to say something.
For, for doing the gates at the fair town unite. It's very glamorous, so thank you guys for, thank you for being there. I actually really love it. It's like election day. You get to see everybody, say hi. Okay, so does anyone have anything for public comment?
Bonnie Christie again. Not a comment, but I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that I'm wearing my conservation commission hat now. That we have hired a consultant to do a natural resource inventory, a town lighting. The inventory that we have now is about, so there's maps hanging in order and this will be much more extensive. It will be more on the lines of what you find in town plan under the natural resource chapter. So the consultant's name is Elise Lawson and she's a certified wetland scientist and wildlife biologist. She has identified ten sites around town that she's going to visit, different types of resources. Anyone is invited to go with her. If they want to go out in the field and talk with her, whatever. And. Yeah, it will all be available to the town. She'll finish it up probably in February and then we'll review the draft. On the commission and then prove it and. Then she will come and do a public presentation on that and all the maps. She'll update all our maps and everything and that will become the town's property. If anybody sees any cool wildlife or knows anything, please let us know.
I saw some turkeys when I was driving.
Have you heard about the owl on Old Hill?
I'd like to know, do we know what kind of?
I don't know.
I have heard that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
There were three deer I tried to kill this morning when I was leaving the transfer station. There were three deer I tried to kill this morning. They were crossing the road as I was saying the transfer station. Dropped off your green bags. I did use my green bag.
It disappears soon as bow season begins. I guess.
Thank you, Bonnie, for that update. Anyone else? I don't think we have anyone online, do we?
We do not.
All right, well, that means all we have left are two non-publics, so after those, we will adjourn and not conduct any other business. So thank you to everybody who joined us tonight.